I think it was when we were on our first run a few years ago. I have noticed, I mean, what has it become? Mike, I know you mainly present during the finance committee reports now, but it used to be our finance chair. Like, does it make a difference?
Well, I feel really good about Mike presenting, but if he wasn't here, I don't.
Yeah.
And it.
Well, you presented the budget, but we usually had, didn't we have a comment during a committee?
I'm just saying, like, we, once a year, adopt the budget.
Right.
I would like the committee that's meeting 10 times to formally say, we're recommending to the board for budget adoption at some point.
Okay.
And it should be on the duty, because really, like, that's the job of the committee, is to go through all that inspection, at the end, say, good to go.
Okay. So I would add that under advisory duty, you think, as like section C?
I'm, I'm just, like, trying to imagine a scenario where, um, yeah, I, I read crazy stories about what happens at some districts that are not well-run. And I, I, I'm very happy those things are not happening here, but, um, if you guys are gonna go inspect the budget for a bunch of time, I feel like there's, that's the opportunity for someone to raise their hand and say, there's something up here.
Right. Although normally, you would have that discussion, though, with Mike in, within the committee confines, be like, hey, can we examine this further, or can you help me with this understanding of why we're doing this? And extrapolate there.
I don't feel super strong about this thing. But, but it is the whole job of the finance committee to, at the, you know, basically come back to the board and say, let's adopt this budget.
Do you feel that, do you feel that what I wrote for the mission was correct, I guess?
Yeah, no, that's great.
Because, I mean, so basically, what I'm saying in the mission, I said, the finance advisory committee oversees the development of the district's budget and will endeavor to review in greater detail and depth fiscal matters that the board is accountable for to ensure board members are informed and making sound financial decisions.
Yeah.
So do you feel like that covers it, or no?
No, because I'm not in the finance meetings, and I want someone to tell me, I'm recommending that you pass this, so that then I can levy to taxpayers. And I can say, I didn't look at every line in this budget, because someone else did.
Okay. Um, I mean, isn't that what we do with Mike's recommendation, though? I feel like Mike, like, I take Mike's recommendation as the.
Because we trust him, we like Mike.
I guess as like an oversight body, I would think within the committee, if, like, I had concerns that Mike's recommendation was, like, that we wanted to challenge it, I would challenge it within the committee and be, like.
That's fine. Well, but you guys keep putting Mike's name in there, and I'm not worried about Mike.
I would, I would challenge anyone that I don't agree with, and then I would rally you behind me to help me.
Okay.
With that. So I don't know, I feel like.
It's fine.
That missions, are we good with?
We're good.
We're good on finance, okay. Um, okay, so here was the one that kind of really got a overhaul with actually, facilities. The mission of facilities, like, the current one was, like, really clunky, and I was trying to figure out what was going on, and apparently, it started as an ad hoc committee. Correct? That's what Craig told me, is that it was originally written as like an ad hoc committee, and then it became a standing committee, but a lot of the language didn't really, like, charter, they kind of just changed the charter from ad hoc to standing. So, um, I just rewrote this mission. So the mission says, uh, "The facilities advisory committee oversees the decision-making process in ensuring that the district's building and grounds aid and support both the district's current needs and long-term district goals. The committee endeavors to review in greater detail and depth facility matters that the board is accountable for, ensuring board members are informed and making sound decisions that are in the best interests of the district, the students it serves, and the taxpayers who fund the district's programs and operations." Now, I guess we're gonna ask you, Muriel, because in policy committee, we discussed that none of us had ever been to a facilities meeting, but we just wrote that mission basically condensed from the previous charters. Long, very prescribed mission. How do you feel about that? That sounds accurate of what you do?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so that was like the main overhaul for facilities committee. And then the other, um, the other edit that we made is that we actually reduced the board members from three to two, and then raised the community members to two, although I guess now, a minimum of two community members may be reworded. No, not right now. So we raised it, so we raised, yeah, so we added two community members, and we reduced the board from three to two.
And I'm gonna tell you, it's been hard to get people, community members into facilities.
Really?
It's hard to get board members into facilities.
Yeah. So that minimum two here, I don't even know if we can do minimum one in facilities, but.
Okay, so my minimum two community members, unless I do a rally and cry, you think I'm gonna have to reword? Okay. I'll, I'll work on that for, for second reading. Um, well, there are other changes here. Okay, and so for the advisory.
You're not saying that you have to have two to operate.
Well, that's what it says.
So, yeah, so minimum two, so that's what we're gonna reword for second reading, that's what we were talking about.
Yeah.
We'll change that. Okay?
Yes.
Okay. But under advisory duties, um, so I took the section, again, that was in a clunky paragraph, put it into list form, and I added two things. I added, "Reviews the five-year report on the buildings and conditions survey," because that should be happening within facilities committee, and two, "Examining facilities matters that the board is accountable for in greater detail," which, again, was another point that was originally in the mission, and I moved it to advisory duties. And then I also added the, um, you know, the OML section, applicability on advisory committees, and I changed the word "all committee agendas" to "any committee agendas, minutes, and proposals will be stored in the facilities committee drive." What's stored on the facilities committee drive was a lot of, like, capital project planning, I guess it's more what's there right now, so.
Do we at least have the building condition surveys there?
No, we don't.
Uh, we should track those down before we lose them. The last few would be good to have.
We have, when are we due for, when are we?
When we're done with this project, we're gonna be due.
It's an every-five-year thing. Every five years, we're due.
We might be due before the end of this project.
Pardon me?
We did one immediately before we sent the last project out to bid.
Okay.
That's what kicked off the project.
Got you. Okay. Okay. All right, so is everyone good with facilities? Nope. Oh, wait, I'm not done. Thank you. I, so after doing the charters, we went and updated policy 2250. And so this is, since we have to do the charters, we went back into policy and just basically, to be quite honest, copied and pasted the entire applicability of open meetings law to committees and, and referenced it, so that we have it now right in policy. If there's a quorum present, yes, it's, it's subject to OML. If there is not, and it's within an advisory committee, it is not. So I just laid it all out right in the policy for anyone to look, because I believe the policies are on where the, where the charters are. Okay?
Let me just explain, uh, OML is open meetings law. We are, as a board, we're supposed to conduct our business, we're having our board meeting, but we have to conduct it in a way that the public can view it. So that's why we have to look at the committee charters to make sure that we are not having a quorum of board members there and conducting business without public being able to observe it. So it's, it's a pretty tricky law, sometimes it gets a little vague, and that's really what this whole discussion was about, is like making sure that we're correct. I just want to say this for the benefit of the students.
We can be a committee.
We're using, yeah, we're using, like, short language, I wanted to say, it's open meetings law. It's a law on the books that says that, you know, if you have a quorum of board members talking, you're conducting business that needs to be observable.
Right. And it also defines what a public body is, defining the public body as the quorum and conducting business, whereas in an advisory committee, we don't have any authority to conduct business, A, because there's not a quorum, and B, because all that we're authorized to do is make recommendations that must be discussed in a public forum, which is a board meeting. Okay, then I will conclude.
Where I need to be here? Okay, so that was.
Back to finance committee.
Back to finance committee. We had a finance meeting, and everything that Mike presented in sick doctor, it went over.
Finance, finance chair is not so bad, huh?
Perfect. Very well said.
I like your report.
Excellent. All right, enter district safety committee.
So we had a district safety committee meeting on the 22nd. This committee has stakeholders all over, not only our school district, but also our local community sheriff's office, um, the state police, Chatham police, fire and rescue, we have members from Questar there, and also Needham. So we really kind of gave a really great update and talked about all district initiatives coming to safety. So we reviewed our New York State standard response protocol, we adopted a new protocol for emergency procedures, they've been going great. We also talked about our relocation site visits that the administration and I did, and talked about that plan. We also talked about our school threat assessment guidelines that we're gonna be using, and also suicide prevention. We also gave an update on our Chatham's collaboration and partnership with the Capital Region Suicide Prevention Program. Then each building gave their building level safety committee updates, and then each of our partners had an opportunity to talk about what it is that they were working on when it comes to school safety for our students. Some, some updates coming up. We're talking about evacuation plans, God forbid, and we, we had one recently, that there's any sort of railroad issues, right? How would we exit our building? So I've heard that there's an evacuation trail at the back of our building if we couldn't get through any of the areas due to some sort of emergency, so I'm gonna be going through that path, taking a look at that, and just seeing, because that would be an option in case we could not leave due to some sort of, you know, to get around the railroad. So that's something we'll be looking at. Also, we're talking about Krelland Park and using that as an evacuation site as well, because that's another site we could go to if there ever was a reason that we couldn't get to the other sites due to the railroad. As we know, the railroad kind of is around our campus, which can make it complicated, and we just had a railroad issue last week, so this really made me think that we need to really make a plan in case that comes to fruition, and it's maybe even closer to our campus. We also talked about emergency procedures for substitutes, so we have our, our partners from Questar, they're working on that, doing a video that we can share with all of our substitutes. Um, also talking about sharing the protocol to families, letting them know what our protocols are for school safety, then also talking about online training for our new employees to make sure that they are getting all the trainings they need, even if they come during the middle of the school year. So that was school safety. And Mary Ann is a representative on the board, anything that I missed there, Mary Ann?
I hope you covered it all.
Good. All ahead. Okay, wellness committee.
So as part of our district goals, we wanted to get our wellness committee back up and running, so this was our first committee meeting that we had in several years here in Chatham, and it was a really, really exciting and impressive meeting. I was really happy with what we accomplished. Again, we have stakeholders from all different, um, all members from all different, you know, pieces, we have parents on this committee, we have students on this committee, teachers, administrators, and Linda is our board representative. So we started kind of by really looking at our wellness policy as a district that the, that the Board of Education adopted, talked about our objectives. We studied the eight dimensions of wellness that are really important pieces of it, because there's so many of those dimensions that you don't think about. So we talked about making sure we're addressing each of those. Then as a group, we discussed our needs. It was really interesting, because we had some really great conversations on what wellness is and who our target audience is. What we decided here at that committee is that we're gonna have subcommittees come out of this committee, because one thing that the committee all agreed, that our faculty and staff wellness is just, is equal and just as important as our student wellness. So this committee's gonna work on both pieces. It's an impossible, huge task to do all together in one committee, so we formed in this committee two subcommittees. So half of our group, we have about 10, 12 people, five and six people in each group are gonna really work towards student wellness, and the other six are gonna work on, on faculty and staff wellness, and then we're gonna meet regularly as a whole group to talk about what everyone's working on, because there's a lot of pieces that could come together. So we already started our, our subcommittee planning, we met in subcommittees during this meeting, planned future meetings, and we have some great initiatives and agendas coming for both our faculty and staff and our students when it comes to wellness. So we're excited about the opportunities this committee, we really accomplished a lot, accomplished some good plans, and we're starting to get rolling. Linda, did I miss anything?
I don't think you missed anything on that. One of the things that we thought about and talked about in the staff wellness committee, subcommittee, was the fact that we know that there's a link between student wellness and staff wellness, and we know that both groups do best when we're supporting staff. So we do have several parents on this part, we have teachers, we have Terry, you can throw in anything that, that I'm missing, but we have thought about a brief survey, something very short, where we might ask the staff what they think their needs are, because you've, you've been doing this a long time, it's not getting any easier out there, that's for sure. So, and we will join back with the, the group, the whole group, and we will pursue all those eight dimensions, and it's a lot. So it's real honor to do it and to work with the people that are here.
So I, I'm really excited about this, because Pat Wilson and I spent 10 months on that policy, and you'll notice that that is not a NISBA template policy. If you look at NISBA template, it's really focused, well, actually, a lot on nutrition, does have a few, you know, key aspects, but, um, Pat and I, actually, in our research, we came across a lot of different colleges, but mainly UCLA, and how they apply their wellness policies and the eight dimensions of wellness. And then we started to research that, and the meanings of each of those dimensions. And what we decided was that we really wanted a holistic policy of wellness here at Chatham, and that's why that one is so customized to how it is. And we put in those triennial assessments and that committee, you know, that there would be a committee overseeing this, and I know nothing happened with it for a number of years, and so it's very exciting that you are picking this up, and I'm excited to see where it goes, because I think this would really be the Chatham, its interconnectedness through its wellness.
It was certainly a great start. I have to say, I was really impressed with the excitement in the group and, and how we organized it to accomplish both pieces that everyone felt equally passionate about. So, yeah, good, really great start. We'll continue to give updates. The nice thing about here at the table, I am on the, I am on the student wellness side, and Terry and Linda are on the subgroup of the, of the faculty staff, so we can kind of both report out when we come to the wellness between the three of us. Are there any, any other reps? I don't think so in the audience, no? Oh, yeah. Yeah, two of our students, Sasha. Sasha and Lion are on the committee, I forgot you guys were both there, and they could also, you know, during the wellness piece, if, if you're here, Lion and Sasha, you can help fill in, and they are sitting with me on the student wellness group. Just, I just want to say, so we had a malfunction, we lost internet, I was able to restart a different meeting, so if you, so this meeting is still being recorded, but it will, it will be called Board of Education Meeting Number Two, because we lost meeting number one. So the recording will be posted, both will be posted, we're doing our best with the technology that we can.
Sure feels like it's been two meetings.
Kinda has, right?
Yes. Okay, so we're ready to move on, old business, second reading of policy 100, 115, 5251, and 9520.6. I guess I'll say, I'm not sure where we, where we lost connection, but we, we did just have a discussion, a second reading of those four policies, and there were no changes. Everyone was happy with them.
Okay. Great. Okay, so we'll move on to R50, be it resolved that the Board of Education adopt the following policies, 100, which is non-discrimination and equal opportunity, 115, student harassment and bullying prevention and intervention, 5251, fund drives, gifts, donations, and solicitations, and 9520.6, the rights of employees to express breast milk in the workplace. Can I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? So how do you want to hit, we did the first reading, we had that discussion.
So, again, I don't know if the connection went out, but, so the first reading of policy 2250, we talked about the fact that we added the applicability of OML law to committees, well, within the policy 2250, and I believe we were all in consensus that there would be no changes, and they liked that. Yes?
Right.
Okay. And then, um, the first reading with charters, again, we had the first reading a few moments ago, and my understanding is we are in consensus on this, there will be a rewording of the minimum community members that I will bring back for second reading. Other than that, I believe we were all good on the edits?
Yep.
Is that correct?
That is correct. Okay, so we would move on to new business, because there's no motions associated with that, we just did that. Correct. Okay. So, yeah. Okay, so we're moving on to R51, be it resolved that the Board of Education designate the list of withdrawn Chatham middle school materials as presented by Donna Eager, the school librarian, to be eligible for disposal in accordance with board policy. And motion.
Motion.
Does anyone have any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Next motion, R52, be it resolved that the Board of Education designate the list of withdrawn Chatham public library materials as presented by Hannah Bachrock, is that pronounced correct? Director, to be eligible for disposal in accordance with board policy. Can I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, so this next one, we might need to talk about, we'll talk about it. R53, be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the closing of the following scholarships with the remaining amounts transferred to an existing active scholarship. The James Hansen Award, which is valued at $7.90, and the Lemuel and Anna Rao Award, which has $68.46 in it, and the Andy Vazak Writing Award, which has $2.23. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Does anybody have any questions about?
I can just say a couple words about it. These are three awards, scholarships that have been sitting and not getting additional money, so they're not enough money to give a scholarship to a student, so they've been sitting for quite some time. So the recommendation was to move this to some different scholarship lines, because they're not being funded.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, next one. R54, be it resolved that the Board of Education approve the MOA with the Chatham Southern School Teachers Association dated January 31st, 2025. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Does anyone have any questions? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, so moved. R55, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda N through O as written. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Anyone have any questions?
I have a comment.
Okay.
We have an exceptional, exceptional resignation to accept today, which is a longtime teacher here, 37 years, Mark Pearson. He taught me in high school.
He taught me.
Yep. So I wish we had like a little, little award we could give out, because we've been really lucky in Chatham the last few years, and unlucky at the same time to be able to celebrate the conclusions of really, like, dedicated careers. I mean, these, these people aren't getting their 20 and clocking out, right? Mark has been here for 37 years. So I guess I just really want to thank him for that dedication, it's really, really great.
Yeah, it's, it's real dedication, I think all of us would agree, who had him to, like, adore him, like, his, him and his lessons, and he, he's left a really positive impression, I think, on most of us in the student body, and that's something that many of us in Chatham will take with us going forward. He's taught generations of us. Um, yeah, and that's the, the true quality and dedication of a teacher, and Chatham's gonna miss him.
We'll be inviting him at the end of the year to give him a certificate, so you can say some of these amazing things when he, when he comes, so there's still more time to celebrate. We'll invite him, hopefully he'll come.
That was it?
Yep. So all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? So moved.
I just wanted to congratulate Emily again, who stuck around the whole meeting. Unbelievable, this, they're not usually this long.
No.
But thank you for being here, and thank you for joining our team.
Yes. Okay, so we don't have any items for future agenda, well, you did have that one.
You know, JD didn't come with, come to us with an ask, but I felt like I was hearing we should maybe take some initiative here, but Andrew, I know you've got a lot of experience here, just looking at those appraised programs, we should pick up that conversation before. I don't know when the deadline is for anything, but.
Yeah, I'll continue to discuss with him, you know, those, we've been so hyper-focused on football, that, that has been taking over, you know, most of our conversations when it came to merging, but we will certainly start those and start looking at other partners and reaching out to others to see where they're at with it.
So it's kind of a feasibility study that we're asking for for future agenda?
He, he, last year, when he brought up football, brought up tennis at the same time.
He brought up tennis, and as a mother of a tennis player, it would be beneficial to merge that program. They're wonderful players, but they do, they literally compete individually, never, never able to win as a team, because they walk in with four, and they have won some, which is wonderful, but they have to win all four and take the other losses.
Okay. Okay, so we are.
So we'll follow a similar process that we did for football.
I have, is this gonna be an ongoing conversation? We should almost, yeah, have, have a kickstarted process.
Those, those three programs were, we knew they were at risk for the last few years.
Yeah.
So those are the priority?
Yeah.
Well, we have a pathway that's been established.
So ju- just to review, we have, we are looking at tennis, cross-country.
And outdoor track.
And outdoor track.
Well, there's two track seasons, so I guess both of them.
I forget which, I gotta look at that list.
It's the same kids, so.
Yeah, cross-country's fall, and then, I always forget what season they're on, and outdoor track is spring.
Well, just as a reminder, I, Andrew, I don't know if you're familiar with the Chatham Gold program, but there are feeder for those track programs down at the junior pages, and at one point, it was suggested, maybe we.
Was it called Chatham Gold?
Chatham Gold. At one, it's Community Org, at one point, we were gonna reach out and figure out, did all of the track kids go away? We're trying to figure out, is there a feeder problem at those, at that lower grade or not, and that's.
Is that still, Chatham Gold is still in?
It's from the Morris Memorial. I actually feel like it would be.
Yeah, yeah.
If I met Mike West, it would be good for you to sit down with him in general.
But whatever, yeah, that's probably.
Yeah, because I think there's a lot that's.
He feeds their soccer program, he feeds, yeah.
Right, and now we have robotics there, too. Like, I think there's a lot that the Morris is really looking to add in their enrichment program for K to six that could feed into a lot of our programs.
See a director at Morris? Is he a director at Morris?
Yes.
What's his name?
Mike West. I can make the introduction if you'd like.
They're not, not to propose opening out of school either, but, um, the kids' club program, you know, that we support here, right? Is sort of a fit for what they do.
I don't know what his capacity is for any of them. Well, maybe for the morning. I don't know. You, you need to sit down with Mike West. I think that would be a great beneficial conversation.
Okay, we're ready. All right, so we're here for this, uh, second public comment. This is for anyone who wants to comment on anything we've spoken about here tonight. Does anybody have anything they wanna sign? Please come in. Just come in and put, sign your name.
Hi, my name is Sam Ricker, and I am a senior here. Um, going along with student safety, I am wondering if there's anything in place to go over protocol and education on if ICE does become prevalent in the Chatham area. My mother works at Ichabod, and I know that she has been made aware of what specific warrants they need to speak with children, even if they're over the age of 18. And, um, basically just going over all of what ICE can do and other, like, immigration police. And I'm just wondering if we're making the community and the staff aware of what to do in that event. Hopefully, it won't be in the near future, but it's just something that I would like to bring up, as I have been noticing that the Hispanic population and immigrants in our community has been increasing a little bit throughout the past couple of years, at least I think so. And yeah, that's, that's really it.
Thank you for bringing that up. You know, I, I know that there are some surrounding districts that are doing a lot of work there, because it's scary.
We talked about it a little bit.
So, yeah, we, we sure have, and I, I just put out a statement to our, to our faculty and staff that here in Chatham, we are committed to every single student. And we are promising to support every student and welcome every student that is into our, our, our community, and teach them with grace, educate them with grace, and support them with grace here, no matter what's going out in our surrounding area. We've been in contact with our school attorney to talk about similar things, um, and we're beginning guidance from our school attorney. New York State is committed that ICE should not be entering any of our buildings, and we are accepting every student still. That doesn't mean that could change, right? So we're all trying to be, um, be real, real careful on that. It doesn't mean, um, it can't be, it can't happen outside of the school community or on the way to school, right? Luckily, we haven't had any reports of that yet. It's a tough time for everyone, but we are, we are certainly, um, working with our, our school attorney to make sure we know all the legality behind it. Not easy times.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your, your comment.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Okay, so we are going to enter into an executive session for the collective negotiations and the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Can I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Gone.
Now, we do not anticipate returning the open session. So I need to appoint, a motion to appoint Andrew Court, the district clerk pro temp for our executive session. Can I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you.